All right, how do I know if we're live? Yeah, it's been thirty-one. Just kidding. All right, we're good, okay. Thank you, all right. Good morning, everyone. Let me welcome you to the Mayor Commission Work Session. Today is April tenth, twenty twenty-three, the time is about nine oh four. I know we don't have a quorum of Commissioners here. I know Commissioner Peduzzi is on his way, as well as Commissioner Ward, so... But we have a very full house, as you can see, and I'm very respectful of everyone's time. So we're gonna go ahead and get started, because we do have a very full agenda. So, first item is the proposal from the Drayor Park Boys and Girls Club. Ms. Johnson, did you want to tee this up, or should we go straight to the presenters?
No, we can go straight.
All right, Ms. Miranda and Angela.
Good morning. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Just getting my bearings here. So I'm Jeannie Miranda, and I'm President and CEO of the Boys and Girls Clubs of Palm Beach County. And just a little bit about the club, just so that you know, know us here in Palm Beach County, because we are a national organization, but we have twenty clubs strategically located throughout Palm Beach County. I've listed the club sites there for you to see. Very exciting news that in January, we opened up three of those twenty sites. So we're now at Coniston Middle School, Jupiter Elementary, and in Pahokee Middle and High School. So we serve over thirteen thousand children throughout the county, and that's annually. Our demographics are sixty-six percent black, twenty-one percent white, and eight percent multiracial. Hispanic population is twenty-six percent, and they mostly identify as white. We have eighty-four percent that live in households at two-hundred percent of federal property level or below, and the, it's pretty much split between boys and girls. We do charge only thirty dollars a year, and with that, the kids get a membership card, and they can come into the club every day after school between the hours of two and eight o'clock. And then on non-school days, we're open from seven-thirty in the morning till six P.M. Our budget this last, or this fiscal year that we're in today, we, it's twenty-four million dollars, and three million of that is in-kind support that we receive from the cities that we operate in. So, let's see, almost, well, a year and a half ago, we had a lead gift that was given to us to build a new club, and the couple that named, that wanna name the club Julie and Mike Connors really were interested in having a club at, in District Five of West Palm Beach. We narrowed in with, with the help of city staff and Leah Rockwell. We narrowed in on Drayor Park as our site for the new club, and we set a budget of twenty-two million dollars for that club. So it's twelve million in construction, eight million in endowment, and two million in startup operating expenses for the first two years. Good news is that we have raised fifteen million dollars towards that twenty-two million dollar goal. So that means the construction is fully funded. And the other good news is that we had our meeting with Prac last Tuesday, and they approved supporting, are voted to support the project. So that was really good news, very exciting news. So from a community needs standpoint, a one-mile radius from the club, as, I don't know how familiar you are with the Boys and Girls Clubs, but basically, we go where we're needed most. So, within a one-mile radius, we have twenty, two thousand two hundred and ten kids. Seven hundred and forty-seven are between the ages of fifteen and nineteen, with hundreds more between the ages of twelve and fifteen. The annual income is thirty-four, thirty-four percent are less than thirty-five thousand, and one out of every ten children live in households with annual incomes of less than fifteen thousand. Sixty-eight percent of the children are of Hispanic origin, with English often the second language in the home. Our feeder schools that we chose to go into are Palmetto Elementary, Belvedere Elementary, Coniston Middle, and Forest Hill High School. Does not mean that other kids can't attend from that district if they attend other schools. It's just, these are the, the schools that we'll be picking up from, using, with our transportation program. So, and just a little bit about the schools, they're all Title I. The demographics are mostly Hispanic. Education-wise, the proficiency level is, and this is for the whole school, not just, you know, the Hispanic and black kids that are normally who we serve. But you can see that the proficiency level at the schools are as low as thirty-one percent for math, and as high as forty-three point six. So it's, there's, there's a great opportunity for us to come in and help, especially with our academic programs. We do have certified teachers at all of our clubs. And from a standpoint of reading, it's as low as forty point two percent, and as high as forty-six point one. So for the new club, the projected operating budget, at least for the first two years, is one point five million. Typically, our budgets are just a little bit bigger, especially for freestanding clubs. So I'm sure it'll grow through the years, and as we earn or grow, grow more grants for the program to fund it. We will have an annual membership of eight hundred. We're just projecting fifty-fifty for boys and girls, and thirty dollars per year will stay for that club, and we'll have the same operating hours. Our programming, as I mentioned before, we do transport the kids from the different schools that we've targeted. We offer family support, STEM, sports and recreation, and then cultural arts, character and leadership development, health and wellness. We do emphasize academic enrichment, social and emotional learning, workforce readiness, and of course, hunger relief. So we serve, every day after school, we serve a snack as soon as the kids get to the club, and then we give them dinner before they go home, and it's a hot meal. From a programming impact standpoint, ninety-five percent, I'm just not gonna name a few of these, because there's a lot, but ninety-five percent of our high school seniors graduated compared to the Palm Beach County School District of eighty-four point nine percent of low-income youth, and eighty-three point eight percent of children of color. And ninety-three percent of our graduating seniors progressed to either college, military, or certification program for skilled employment. A little bit about the parents. Sixty-four, sixty-four percent of parents reported that if it were not for the club, they would not have been able to obtain or maintain employment. And sixty-five percent of parents reported that if it were not for the club, their, their child would be left alone after school and/or throughout the summer. We listed out all the community meetings that we've had to date, and still a lot more to come, and we did that for the benefit of the Commission. And then last year, when we applied for the twenty-twenty-two Community Funding Project, we had many letters of support, and now we're going back to everyone to, to give us new letters of support since a little bit has changed in the project, as Angela will show you. We're not waiting to open the club before we start investing in District Five. We do have a program in Forest Hill High School with four hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we secured from the Department of Education. And then Coniston Middle School, as I mentioned, opened up in January, and we secured a five hundred thousand dollar grant. And most of these programs are academic-based. So I'm gonna bring Angela up to talk a little bit about the site plan.
Good morning, everyone. Angela Biagi with WGI. Just wanna go through our site plan iterations here that we've been working on for some time. This was the original plan that we had presented. And just so everyone knows, this site is in the northwest corner of Drayor Park, Southern Boulevard's to the north, the ramp to I-95 is to the west. And we had originally had the building in blue, kind of pushed all the way up to Southern Boulevard as close as we could with the setbacks and buffers. The building that's kind of peach or orange in the back would be the gymnasium behind. And we were trying to sort of sandwich the site in between Southern and some existing mound, and, an existing mound and some existing site circulation that was out there. So we received feedback that, that's, you know, to, to look at some alternatives to see if we could push the building further west so that when you're driving down Southern Boulevard, when you're coming into the park, the building itself isn't so prominent. So we did go back to the, to the drawing board and, and reorganized the site, which I'll show in a second here. But the resulting of that was that the building and the gymnasium are pushed further west. We're looking at a leased area site of about one point five seven acres, which is the building and the gymnasium. There'll be a shared parking lot, which will be open to the public when the club is not in use, and that's point six eight acres. And then there's two mounds, one very large one just south of the parking area, and a smaller one that the club has committed to removing and flattening so that it becomes more usable open space for the community. So this is the new proposal. Outlined in blue is that one point five seven acres of the leased area, which is the gymnasium, the club building itself, and the required playground space for the club. The gray area is that point six acres, eight acre shared parking lot. And then just below that, in between the, kind of just south of the building and south of the parking lot, is the area that, that is that existing mound that will all be flattened, and, and hopefully better utilized by the community. And this, the, the building itself right now is about four hundred feet from the entrance of Southern Boulevard, so it is significantly off the edge of the road. And I'll show you in a minute some kind of mitigating factors we're looking at to further try to buffer that from view. I'll go through, these are some renderings that we created. This is the view from the I-95 ramp. In all these pictures, we show the building as white. We don't have really any architectural design or color selection prepared yet, but it's just shown in white for ease of viewing. So this is the view from ninety-five with the existing palms that are along the ramp remaining in place. As you come around the corner, heading east on Southern, there's a large area of FDOT, limited access right-of-way, that has existing vegetation in there. That's, this is the vegetation as it exists today, there'll be no change to that. And as you can see, we put sort of shadowed the buildings in the back. The large building on the right is the gymnasium, and the, the shorter building to the, to the left would be the club building, which would not be visible as you, as you come around that corner. As you travel further east, getting closer to the Drayor Park Trail entrance, this is the, the view with the existing trees maintained out there along the edge of the road. View turning into the park. And we do plan to work with the Cox Science Center and the proposed master plan design to make sure that anything that we're proposing fits in with our ultimate goals of whatever that master plan may be. This would be the entrance to the club building. This is looking kind of straight in at the front of the club, other entrance. And, you know, we would look at some alternatives, too, to be able to put back a little bit of that topography or birmingham along the entrance drive. So here, this shows some mounding and birmingham to further screen that parking lot from view so as you're driving in, you're not looking at parking lot, and you're looking at more green space.
So at this point, the next steps for us is to work with Kimberly on the lease terms for, for this project. And hopefully, some point soon, we'll get in front of the Commission for approval of those lease terms. So that's it.
Great, thank you for that presentation. Couple of questions. You had mentioned that you are working with Cox Science Center and their master plan, so you guys are playing well in the sandbox with each other.
Yes, so we've been working with them. We've been to all the meetings. We've shared our site plans as they've changed along the way. So that way, Jorge, who's leading the project, he's the architect that's lead, so that he has all the information that he needs in order to include us in his vision.
Okay, and that's good, then, that's very important. I think the Science Center, the zoo, you all will be very good occupants of, of this park space with the programming. And I just hope and encourage, and I say the same message when I talk to the zoo and to the Science Center, that all of you play well in the sandbox together. Because it would be, I think, disheartening to the community if there was any bickering or countermeasures from one of you against the other. So, please.
Yeah, I totally agree, Mayor James. We, we are very excited about having partners that are so close to the club, because we are, we do a big career-bound program, which is getting the kids prepared for what's next after they graduate from high school. And one of those, one of the items that we do is make sure that the kids have opportunity for employment. So, you know, just to be able to work in the Science Center or in the zoo and give them that, you know, that experience, I think is, would be great for the kids.
Yeah, the synergistic opportunities are significant. One other question, you mentioned transportation. How, what is your program? How, how do you guys move the kids from the schools to, to your location?
Yeah, so we're planning for two buses in, for this club. And basically, they will each be at the elementary school sites when they let out. And then later on, as the high schools let out, or the middle schools let out, they'll, they'll be there to pick up the kids. When they come to the club, you know, they're let, released into the building, and then pickup is by parents. So we don't transport home, because needless to say, that would be a lot of stops for us. But, but they do, the parents do come, which is a great thing. And I like to say, that piece of, you know, our business is really important to us because it gives us a chance to interact with a caregiver on a daily basis.
And you on the buses?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. Commissioners, Commissioner Lambert.
Thank you so much. Yep, okay. Thank you so much for the presentation, and congratulations on your fifteen million that you've raised so far of your twenty-two. I know that that's not an easy feat, so great job there. I agree with the mayor that this could be very synergistic with the Science Center and the zoo that is already there. I know that one of the things that has always been a concern for me and the neighbors in this area is just that we are giving up or exchanging parkland for this project. Can you talk a little bit about the size and, you know, the, I know that you are working with the city on the removal of the mound, and so I just want to make sure that we're being fair to the city as far as the land that we're giving up for this space.
Yeah, so the building, as Angela mentioned, the building space, including the gymnasium and some, we have to have, unfortunately, fenced in playground space for the kids. That's just a requirement by the Health Department, who, you know, has authority over our, like, daycares and youth development agencies like us. The parking lot is point six eight acres, and then the mound is one acre. So as, you know, we've been meeting with Parks and Rec, that was, that was an item of contention to make sure that we weren't taking up too much space. Pushing us back more towards the lake actually puts us in an area that's, I would, I wouldn't say it's not used, but it's, it's not used as often as some of the other areas in the park. So that's good from that standpoint. And, you know, I think that Pat Sned, you know, was a challenge for us on the Parks and Rec Committee, Advisory Committee, and she wanted to, the devil's war, the devil was in the details, as she'd like to say to us all the time. So I think we ended up basically saying that it was like, what, point six, the point six acre, point six eight acres of the parking lot, since it's shared. She, she basically did not count that. The fact that we're one point five seven, the way that she looked at it in replacing or removing the mounds and giving that green space back to the, the park, that it was like a point five seven impact to the park.
Follow-up. Well, thank you. I know that Pat and many of the others on the Parks and Rec Committee are wonderful stewards of our, our parks program and our, our land here in the city. So I'm glad to hear that they were in favor of this. I was also curious if you could share just a little bit more about the selection of this neighborhood and the community. I know you touched on kind of some of that data and demographics, but you mentioned in the beginning of the presentation that the Connors and the club was very interested in looking in this area. Can you tell us a little bit more about how you select areas, this area versus another area?
Absolutely. So when the Connors expressed interest in West Palm Beach, and basically said, "This is where we wanna go, so figure it out." So we look at different, you know, districts and the, you know, the population. They're economically, if they're economically disadvantaged, you know, it's high crime. And in this case, when we zeroed into the possible schools that would be, we would be picking up from, that's where it was really highlighted, the need that existed in District Five. And it's not because we have bad schools. It's because, unfortunately, they get an influx of English-language learners at these schools, and it's a high percentage. So by having academic programs like ours to complement what, what the teachers are doing during the school day is, is beneficial for these kids. Because they get, it's not like we do school after school, but they definitely get some remediation to help close that gap.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions, comments? Yeah, Madam City Administrator.
I, I would like to have the city attorney, you know, kind of walk the board through the process that would be involved, because, you know, we're talking about leasing of city property, and there are different ways that we get to do that. And I don't want to presume that the board has signed off on us going in this direction. So I would like the city attorney to walk you all through that, and then perhaps you all can then, you know, kind of weigh in on where you are.
Very good. Madam City Attorney?
Absolutely. So your rules that govern meetings of the Commission provide specifically under subsection twenty-seven, the rules as it relates to leasing and selling property. And when we talk about leasing, it's any lease that's over five years. It requires a supermajority vote of the Commission after first declaring the surplus, and then choosing your method. And in this instance, the method chosen is to negotiate with the specific party that's specifically allowed for under the ordinance, the ordinance that you adopted for your rules. And then you would buy ordinance, so you'd have two readings, and require a supermajority vote in order to transfer the property. So that's kind of the step as it relates to moving forward. But obviously, we will, it's our goal and plan to work with the Boys and Girls Club in Fay, your City Administrator, Ms. Johnson, and come to you to bring you some, a term sheet with the proposed terms of the agreement to make sure that it looks like something that you all are interested in proceeding with. So that's kind of our next steps. Does that work for you, Fay?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson, excuse me.
Any questions about the process? Commissioner Peduzzi.
Thank you, Mayor. What are the current leases for the zoo and the, and the Science Center? Do we have an idea, or those, those are long-term leases, probably?
As I sit here, my recollection of the, the leases, lease terms are at minimum fifty-year initial term with thirty-year renewal options, but I'd have to look at the specifics to make sure that I'm, that that's accurate. But that's, as I sit here, I believe that's, those are the terms of those leases.
Thank you, and I assume that the Boys and Girls Club will be looking for something similar?
Correct. Yeah, I mean, from our standpoint, making a twelve-million-dollar investment, and then the annual investment of one point five million to serve the children in District Five, we would like to see a long-term lease.
Let me follow up on that, Mayor, if I could. You said serving the children of District Five. I assume that this will, it's open to the whole county? Or is it specifically, is it, are you funded just for a certain geographical area?
No, it doesn't work that way for us. Our budget doesn't work that way. But typically, because we pick up from the schools in District Five, the majority of the kids that will be attending will be District Five kids, yeah. And we do have a club up in the Pinewood area, Northwood, and another club out off of Haverhill, and, no, Belvedere and Drexel. Yeah, so we're, we actually, this would be the third club in West Palm Beach.
Thank you. I think it's exciting, and I think that there is such great opportunity for synergism as, as mentioned by the mayor and Commissioner Lambert. And hopefully, you'll even have some opportunities for some, some joint programming, or, you know, you'll be able to actually utilize the resources that are right there.
Yes.
So, looking forward to having you.
Ms. Miranda, can you talk a little bit about some of the improvements that are gonna be made to the Pinewood facility? Because I, when we talked, I said I wanted to make sure... facility? Because I, when we talked, I said I wanted to make sure, I think part of our conversation was that there would be some monies invested in upgrading that facility, uh, in conjunction with, uh, moving forward here. Is that still, are those still underway?
Yes, yes. It's still the plan. Um, we are, this project is actually part of a fifty million dollar campaign that we're doing. Uh, our hope is that once we get past all of the approvals for this project, that we can then start to work on fundraising and planning with Leah to see if, because originally, the site that we're on in Pinewood has two buildings, and there was planned for a third building. Uh, we would love to go back and explore that, um, and, uh, put in a teen center, like we did out in Belle Glade. Uh, that teen center out in Belle Glade now serves over two hundred kids daily. It's like two hundred and thirty kids daily. And, uh, it would be really nice for the teens in that neighborhood to have, uh, the same programs that we're offering out in Belle Glade through this, um, very strong, you know, teen, you know, career readiness programming.
I would encourage you to have those plans as fully developed as possible before we go through this approval process. Cause I don't want to have approved this and then find out that, oops, we can't really do what we wanted to do at the, at the, uh, at the other facility. Because to me, in my view, that's part and parcel of the deal, if, if, if you know what I'm saying.
Yes.
And so, I really would like to get a clear understanding as to what the, what the improvements are going to be there. I know you may, won't have all the details ironed out, but to get a good sense, not only what, what's going to be done, when it's going to be done, and how that relates to the timing of this particular facility. So, I would encourage you to have that information
Okay.
sooner rather than later.
Okay.
Uh, Commissioner Lambert.
To that point, if you could, at the commission meeting, it would be wonderful to hear some of the transformational stories that you have from your clubs in West Palm Beach and, um, what we can expect to see
Absolutely.
from this investment. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, what direction are we looking for, uh, today? This is just for information only. Are you looking for any specific direction from the commission?
Uh, I think in talking with Kimberly, um, and, uh, Ms. Rothenberg and, um, Ms. Johnson, I think the next steps for us is the lease term, uh, um, so that we can present those to you at a commission meeting.
Okay, let me, let me, is there any objection to proceeding, uh, in, in that direction, Commissioners? Uh, negotiating lease, obviously that will come to us for approval? Okay, so I, I think that, uh, Madam City Attorney, Madam, uh, City Administrator, I think you have consensus of this body to at least continue moving in that direction, keep us apprised. Um, and also continue, uh, Ms. Miranda, to meet with the neighboring communities to make sure that they're fully aware what's going on, meet with the, uh, Cox Science Center as well as the zoo, to make sure everybody's kind of, uh, on the same page as we go forward. And continue to develop the plans for the, the Pinewood Center so that can
Yes.
come, come to us for information. All right?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. It was a very good, good presentation, very helpful information. Thank you. All right. Uh, the next item is interim trolley operation stop-gap plan. Mr. Fana, are you gonna tee this up?
I am, Mayor.
Okay.
Good morning, Armando Fana, Assistant City Administrator. Good morning to the mayor, City Commissioners, Administrator Johnson, staff and, uh, folks watching at home. I want to first start off by thanking, uh, staff, city staff, both in engineering services and legal for helping over the last couple of months and beginning to evaluate uh, how we transition or how we move our, uh, our public transport forward from where we are now. Uh, also CRA staff have been heavily involved as well as DDA. So, thank staff for all their efforts over the last couple of months. Just a quick introduction of where we're, where we are now and where we're headed. You know, the, the trolleys themselves are certainly downtown's most visible public trans, transport option. Uh, but they're not alone. We obviously have other, uh, means of moving people around. And that includes the, uh, the circuit vehicles that you see around town that are operated, uh, by the company Circuit but paid through the DDA. And we also have circuit vehicles that are paid through Brightline and also through, uh, the Ben Hotel. And all those move people around in and around downtown. Uh, as well as the bike share program that was started about a year, a little over a year ago with Brightbike, uh, which is beginning to see increased ridership. So, all these are, are contributing, and they augment other systems like Palm Tran, of course, Brightline itself, and the Tri-Rail. All those are moving people in and out of downtown and within downtown. The trolleys themselves have been in operation for, for several decades, uh, and they've served us fairly well. And I, I, I think about, there's a nostalgia to the trolleys, right? I remember being, uh, a, a younger man than I am now and bringing my, my two, two sons who are now adults into downtown when they were little kids, and they would ride the trolley. Uh, and, and there was a lot of ridership, particularly in, in those middle years. But that has dropped off significantly, uh, particularly since twenty twenty. And so, that is one of the challenges we've been presented with is just declining ridership in the trolleys, whereas some of the other, uh, systems like Circuit have seen increases. Uh, our fuel maintenance costs have gone up, and that's because we have an aging fleet. They haven't been a replacement trolley in quite a while. Um, so that, that's beginning to show where, a lot of wear and tear. The vehicles themselves are, are fairly large. I get a lot of complaints, um, that I hear from both citizens and even from some of the Commissioners sometimes. And I see it where the trolleys are going down Clematis or some of the other streets that are a little more narrow because we've enlarged the sidewalks. And they're having a difficult time maneuvering within those streets, particularly on Clematis. And then looming right upon us is that we have an existing contract for the trolleys, which expires at the end of May, that we need to be, begin to deal with. So, before I, I turn it over to, to Wen, I do want to point out that although we're, we have these, this expiring contract and some of these challenges, we do have some opportunities coming up. Uh, one is that we have never had, uh, a dedicated staff person or staff persons or, or department overseeing any of the city's public transit, whether that be the trolleys or other things. So, beginning in May, we have a new individual who's coming in, who I'm very excited about, who's going to be our new City Mobility and Transportation Manager. And that will be a primary function of this position. It's a new position in this year's budget. But the primary function is to oversee the operations um, and, and help with the strategy of, of public transit within our city of West Palm that the city or the CRA or DDA is paying for. Uh, the other thing that is brand new to the city is parking revenues. Uh, this is going to be the first budget that we're getting into where we can be able to use parking revenues for mobility purposes. So, that's going to help augment, uh, CRA and DDA dollars, uh, and help leverage those dollars as we move into hopefully the next phase of mobility within West Palm Beach. There is a new initiative that just kicked off, um, a couple of months ago called WPP Go. And that's a private-public partnership collaboration, I should say, between private sector entities and public entities. Uh, they have a executive director. They've started to meet regularly. They had their first kickoff meeting about a little over three weeks ago. And that's going to be an important component as well, to be able to try to bring in some private sector dollars and get the feedback that we need as we move into the next phase of public transit in West Palm Beach. And then we are winding down our high season here in West Palm. And so, that gives us an opportunity over the next few months to try some new things as we go into the new, to the lower season, uh, and we don't have as much traffic on the road, both pedestrian and, and vehicle traffic. We can begin to pilot some things and test some things out during the next few months so that we can move to that next phase of mobility. With that, I'm going to bring a familiar face up, Wen Deng, who's going to talk to you about what we might be able to pilot over the next few months.
Sure. Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. For the record, Wen Deng, I'm a transportation engineer that's supporting on this effort with the Engineering Services Department. Um, so just as Armando is, um, referencing, this is a stop-gap pilot, right? So, uh, what we're initiating is, um, something that is, can go into a transitional phase and then helps us determine what is the future. So, before we look at the future, let's look at what is existing in, as a, um, a, a city system right now. So, on the right side of the screen right here, you will see that this is the existing service that we are providing, which is a fixed route service that's circulating downtown and a complimentary route, uh, blue route that, uh, essentially connects downtown Northwood to downtown West Palm Beach. Um, over COVID, as you can see, that, um, the DDA has overlaid a, an on-demand system, which is, um, very frequently used by riderships. But when we think of on-demand, it's point-to-point service, it's also pooled service, right? So, uh, multiple trips on one, on vehicle. So, uh, let's think of this as a whole. And we try to normalize this. It's like, what does it cost, cost per rider? How, how, how do we compare? Um, and as you can see, that Circuit has really gained its popularity, especially last summer, that has a spike in ridership. And, uh, we can only assume that those are, um, are downtown residents that's here, that's using the system frequently. So, without going into that level of detail and on a high level, right, we also have Rose Trolley that's circulating downtown. They are a nonprofit. Um, there's really, uh, not a lot of data that we have on them outside that they are providing on average about five thousand trips last year. And then, uh, when we looked at the data for, um, the on-demand in comparison to the existing fixed route, you can see that it's approximately eleven and a half, um, thousand per month. And then we normalize that, and we think of a cost per rider. So, this is not a direct comparison. It is a reference for you, we to think of, how can we get back to pre-pandemic? Because system-wide, right now, we're not even at half of what pre-pandemic is. So, pre-pandemic, we're about three hundred and fifty to five hundred thousand ridership per year. This system, um, pre-pandemic was very, very popular. So, our goal is how do we test and pilot the stop-gap so that we can get back to pre-pandemic data? So, another example that, um, I, I want to give is like, we're not the only one doing this. The city of West Palm Beach is not the one, uh, the only one that's trying to figure out what is the future of, um, transit, especially on-demand. So, I, I like to give you a, a quick example of a DART. This is in Dallas. Um, they're, uh, they, um, they have a GoLink membership, which is significantly higher. But they're also a much, much larger system. And as you can see, um, and I, I want us to focus more on like, what is the subsidy, right? Cause it's all comes down to cost per ridership. Our system is more efficient than that other, um, than GoLink and, and DART. So, what is the pilot goal? And, and, and we, we have to think about like, how can we expand services with the finite resources that we have? You know, operation cost is the largest cost. And we, essentially, with the finite resources that we have, how can we optimize the route and make it more efficient? Um, the other thing is, um, vehicle selection, fleet selection. Um, as Marmono said, that the, the vehicle right now are much larger, which means that their maintenance cost is much larger. The demand for drivers are different, right? Your licensing, there, there, it's more difficult to hire drivers with, um, CDL license. And you can see that throughout all the, the transit, um, you know, network and system that the workforce and, and making up for the workforce is much more difficult. Um, the other thing that I think we should definitely test for is, um, we think about on-demand, and as on-demand is working for downtown so well, can we use these smaller pooled services to help us manage events? And, um, if you guys are here in the last boat show, right, we see quite a bit of, um, golf carts that's circulating downtown. And that's not very well regulated. So, what if we think about the next large event that we have here? And to offset some of these demand and helping that system and getting people to their event space by redistribution, um, of our, like, the assets and our parking assets. And lastly, of course, um, we're always thinking about efficiency, right? Cause this is like, even though we're thinking about a small system, we have to think about the long-term goal is to get offsets on our Okeechobee and of US One, all these major routes that are coming into and out of downtown. But there are trade-offs in everything, right? That we, we want to give people choices. There's not one size fit all. What we're trying to figure out, what is the right system and what is the right combination that we have, um, as, as we're testing this pilot? So that we can determine what is the combination system that works for the city. And I know that we have currently a, a grant right now that we secured back in twenty fifteen for a, um, to purchase new trolleys. Uh, but essentially, we know that the trolley right now is not very sustainable. And we want to think about what is the future of our fleet selection? Without going into detail of what vehicle, and we want to look at the look and feel, I think what's really important during this pilot study period is to determine what is the right-sized vehicle that makes the most sense for our ridership. So, it might be a combination, and it might be, um, it might be a smaller vehicle. But more, most importantly, we have to be consistent with our, um, you know, our electrification plan, of course, our sustain, sustainability goal to shift this in, uh, this system, this new system into electric vehicles. And so, um, there's about twelve to fifteen vendors in this area that offer, uh, offer, offer some kind of transit, um, services. So, we shortlisted down to four vendors, and we sent an RFI throughout this last month as a, during our preliminary, um, study period. And ultimately, we asked them a few questions that, um, you know, and it, the question goes into detail, like, what's your cost per hour? What's your KPI? How do you maintain it? Um, essentially, do you have a website? How do you, people call and make reservation? But most importantly, we, we think about like, do you operate in Palm Beach County? Because the stop, what's most important with the stop-gap is you have the ability to flip the switch and have a system that works for us right now. It's the transitioning into, um, what we're looking for. The other thing that, um, we, we ask is like, what type of vehicle that they have outside of the trolley? And of course, um, as, um, uh, you know, as we, um, issued this RFI, and these are the responses, we know that there's all three other vendors in, that's operating in this area that has, um, vehicle, um, that is similar to what we think of as a new vehicle in the future. So, you're probably thinking like, what is their ask? As we're giving you, and the, the mayor and the commissioners, a lot of information is that to help us make a decision on what do we want to do, um, in our, um, as, as we're transitioning to the stop-gap. Um, the, of course, there's always the option of no change, right? There's, um, an option is always no change. Uh, we can essentially issue another contract, uh, with the existing, um, vendor that we have right now. And then we go through the, the study period because the city is currently studying what is the future of the West Palm Beach Transit Study. Um, it's currently underway. We don't have any recommendations. So, we can go ahead and, um, hold and make, uh, as, as we have results. The other thing as we're, um, thinking of is maybe as part of the stop-gap, and, cause we want to gather enough information to help us make, determine what is the future, uh, maybe some slight modification. And in essence, um, the blue route itself is probably the most costly, right? So, um, think about that as like changing, um, that route into on-demand. And then, uh, we call option three as ripping that bandage off. And, uh, that is a, a flip the switch, and we go a hundred percent to, um, a, a new change starting June first, and ultimately removing the essence of, um, the, the, the trolley operation itself. And then see how we can start testing and piloting these new ideas. And then lastly, option four is a combination of option one and option three. Um, what if we, um, essentially extend the contract up to three months as we can do marketing and advertising, get people to, um, be familiar and have user adoption of what we're trying to do? But in essence, I, I want you to think about this as an example, right? Um, there, there's a, there's a few things that we can do within the budget that we have and stay within the budget that we have. Um, and ultimately is, uh, what we call, um, blue on-demand is, um, turning that into, um, an equity zone where we can reach more than just on the, the finite, the fixed route that we have. Um, modifying the yellow so that we capture the top three out of five highest ridership into downtown. And then, of course, um, uh, thinking about connecting to the Palm Beach outlets. Um, and ultimately, that is an official park and ride for, um, Palm Tran itself, up and down I ninety-five, um, bringing those, um, riders into downtown. Um, and then lastly, um, think about a new coverage area south of the city, uh, whether if it's, um, to go down to the Jefferson Terminal District. And then, um, South Dixie, as you may all know, have a, a series of parking issues down there. But let's figure out how we can get people coming to those popular restaurant on Restaurant Row without, um, having to use their vehicle. Ultimately, this is just an example during the pilot. Well, we're going to get results and, um, study results from our West Palm Beach Transit Study. That's going to feed into making any modification to this. But think about how we can connect four out of five commissioned district, offset demand on your highest, um, roads that carries a lot of traffic, and then providing access to everyone. And so, um, of course, with everything, we have to do some kind of marketing and communications. And I know that we've been in communications with the DDA, and the DDA has been like the integral, um, component to this, is to help us with social media marketing, getting the words out, getting people used to the system. We do have a West Palm Beach BERT process that I personally have used myself, and I think that's very, very effective, is to go through that process and make sure that our customers are served. And then, of course, um, one of the thing that I, when I was reached out during the RFI is, um, can we do cross-marketing on the existing Circuit app that is operating in downtown? We can absolutely do that. Push notification, they can offer it in the, the- They can offer it in the 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 app itself or on the vehicle. And then lastly, of course, a website, right? We you lose people when they click more than once, so the dedicated website is important. So with that, what is the schedule for this stopgap? And we think of this as up to two years pilot, and there's there's a reason for that. Ultimately, this is in coordination with the attorney's office and their advice is that, sure, we're going to think about launching this program in the summer of 2023 as our study is transit study is underway. Getting all that information and feeding it into the stopgap, we're going to essentially modify and adjust as we need to and then finalizing that. Once we finalize it, we will have enough information to put in the new RFQ that we're going to have to issue. And so if you think about the procurement process, the communications process and all of that, that is that's really needed in this pilot program, it will be up to two years that until we have a new program. So I'm going to pause and turn it back to Armando because this is quite a lot of information. And we are looking for directions from the mayor and commission out of option one through four. Which option would be best that will help us make the decision and transition?
Thank you, Wynn. And the options you saw, there those could be, those are examples. There could be modifications to that, hybrids to that. So we just wanted to give you some ideas of where what we can do. There's things we can do immediately. There's things we could do over the long term. But I I think it's worth considering, looking at experimenting a little bit over the next few months and finding out what are the what are the best options for our citizens and our and our visitors? What are they going to use the most? Certainly, Circuit has picked up a lot of popularity over the last two years, whereas the trolley has has certainly dipped over the last two years during the same time. Now, is that some of that shift happening because people are riding Circuit? I'm sure it is. Some of it is. We've done a pretty good job of making downtown a lot more walkable as well. So people within downtown are feel a lot more comfortable walking throughout downtown than even having to jump on a trolley. But, you know, I know when I take public transportation anywhere, I want it to be frequent. I want it to be clean and I want it to be efficient. And we've got to get to a system that does that so that people feel comfortable riding it. With that, we'll take some questions and let me kind of go back to so you can see some of the options there to consider.
One question I have, you presented, you know, some options, but you said those aren't the only ones. What, how do we explore what other possibilities are out there? You guys are closest to it. So are you saying that these options are the ones are the best ones you would recommend?
Yeah, I think the I mean, talking about in terms of vehicles or routes or?
Well, both. I mean, I'm, you know, you know, you're asking us to to choose. Or I thought you were asking for some direction from us as to which option and which we wanted to head during the pilot period. I see four here.
Correct.
You're saying that's not the exclusive universe. Then how do we figure out what other possibilities exist? Or are these the four that you highly recommend?
These are the four we recommend. There's there's three different routes on the trolley right now. So you could play with those routes and decide which ones we want to keep right now. We want to keep any, eliminate all of them, keep some. As as was mentioned, the the most popular route right now is the yellow route. So that would be one, if we were going to keep a fixed route for now during the pilot, I would recommend that we maintain that one because it has the most ridership. The blue route is by far our most expensive route and the one that's most underutilized. So if we were just logically looking to eliminate a route, that would be the route that I would recommend looking to eliminate and moving that more into a on-demand system and see how that works. Because right now, we're just not getting any riders. That that trolley is empty almost every time it goes north. Wynn, you want to add anything?
Okay, we got a couple of hands up. We'll go with Commissioner Ward and?
Thank you for this. Just to clarify, because I did remember you saying that the yellow route is highly used and it makes sense. But on the option four, it says blue slash yellow route on demand. Was that just kind of an option or is that something that you'd be recommending for this option? Because then the next one, I see it saying that maintain yellow fixed route as a as an example. So?
Right, absolutely. It would be a combination because right now, if you think about the yellow route, it is much longer and larger. But offsetting some of that into on-demand while maintaining in and essentially cutting that yellow route short. Think about this because like, right now, the yellow routes go all the way through Mary Square onto Okeechobee and around the Kraviss. If you think about what's going on at the square on Saturday and Sunday, that section is shut off and for for really pedestrian activities and like that space is being activated. So essentially, cutting that short so that you can have a more direct U-turn, you know, for the the trolley or the vehicles to turn around. That'll give you some offset in operational cost so that we can offset that into more on-demand. The other thing is vehicle selection has a lot to do with how much we can stretch this system. That's what we're we're the point that we're trying to make. By going to a smaller vehicle, you can accept it's as as we talked about earlier, right? Cost per rider, it's it's two and a half times more. So one trolley equals two circuit vehicle, two electric vans, two whatever those vehicle selections is, one per two. So by shifting the vehicle selection, you can stretch your dollar and do more and create more on-demand services.
Can I have a follow-up?
Yes.
As to the blue, I acknowledge that it's low ridership. I just would be remiss to not say that I think it's the stopping points that are an issue and the fact that it ended at Northwood Road when you've got 20, you know, 30, you know, if I were on 40th Street to utilize that trolley, I would have to walk or bike 20 blocks and then get on the trolley to come down. And so it just doesn't make sense to me versus ordering an Uber. So if if we did go the route of on-demand, I would just hope that within this long period of of test pilot, that we would identify the higher points of on-demand requests, given that we have, you know, other development coming along the corridor, to kind of determine eventually a fixed route for some of those people that are utilizing to come down and drop off their their payment for their water bill to come get. We are still technically a food desert to come to the grocery store and things like that. I think that's very important. And then obviously, going into the, you know, contacting the residents to utilize that now, that, you know, advertising that this shift is happening so that they know to use it, that they know to download an app or finding already difficulties with West Palm Beach Key in that standpoint of downloading an app and understanding an app. And so I'm just nervous that the residents that we would love to target for these riders aren't going to know about it.
Yeah, absolutely. The communication strategy is going to be key. And to your point of of the the northern route, you know, I think the pilot that we have on-demand will allow us to see if we communicate it right. Will allow us to see what that demand is. But for fixed route, what's really important on fixed routes is that density. And that is lacking right now. We do have projects, obviously, that are happening in that north end. As as Northwood Village builds up, as Curry Park becomes a popular destination, I think that'll make a fixed route much more viable. But as Wynn said, I mean, we we have to create these equity zones where there is going to potentially be some subsidy to make sure that people within neighborhoods that are underserved have an opportunity to be able to ride on transit. But we also have Palm Tran as well. We're beginning to build closer relationships with them. And there could be ways we can augment Palm Tran as well because they do have fixed routes that they can, if they enhance them, that could be much much more effective.
The equity piece is is going to be a very important, has to be a very important part of this conversation. Commissioner Fox?
Thank you so much. I have several comments. I think my call with Wynn about this was about two hours long, so I'll make it, try to make it brief. But just to go back to the blue line, I did want to mention that after our meeting last week when we were having this exact conversation of why it was the lowest, I went to an event at the Hart and Soul Park on Friday night and was trying to ask some of the residents about whether or not they take the trolley. And basically, to a person, they all said they do not think the trolley is for them. They think it is for downtown residents. They don't know where it stops. As we're standing there, we watched at least five different trolleys go by with not one person on it, zooming by like we were in the Indy 500, like they don't even try to stop for residents. And so I am I am very much looking forward to having an equity program where the people that need it the most in our city because they don't have transportation options, they don't have cars, they can't afford insurance, a lot of older residents that are feeling like having a circuit or a Rose Trolley gives them a new lease on life and independence they didn't have, they're able to go to the grocery store. So it's very important to me that anything we move forward with includes that that piece. But as a downtown resident, I also benefit very much from the circuit. And I think that the trolley has served us very well over the years. I think what you said about nostalgia. And I think early on, when City Place was first here, trying to connect City Place to Bradley's, for example, and make sure that everyone was utilizing our whole whole city. But like you said, I think it's we have better lighting now. It's better connection. It's a lot of people can walk those distances. And some of the older residents I hear from downtown in a Verdenia Place, they are having a lot of trouble, not only because now our trolleys are so out of out of service that they're not ADA compliant, wheelchairs cannot be lifted from them anymore. The older residents that say, especially since we have new curbless streets, they can't even step up as high to the trolley. So I feel like it's not for everyone. It's for maybe visitors that are at the Hilton that don't know how to get around. And that's that's nice, too. But it's not the most efficient use of our funds, I think, to be paying for trolleys that go by with not one rider on them. Most of the time, I just stand outside. It's like a hobby, trying to figure out who's riding the trolley, where are they getting on? And I I can't really pinpoint who's using it. And so to me, ripping the band-aid off is the option for now. I know it's not something that that we're going to have a lot more studies. And so it's not, this is not the permanent solution. But why not test it to see if we have more circuits on the road? I think the only downside of circuit that I hear is that there's not enough of them because sometimes you have to wait too long. So if we were investing more in them and more in our equity zones and waiting for further studies, I think down the road, we are going to have more people. Let's say when one Flagler opens, maybe people are coming out, coming to Tri-Rail or Bright Line and want to connect to one Flagler. Maybe we have routes at 8:00 AM on another kind of trolley down the future or a fixed route that, you know, our routes are going to change. I think when 8111 and the golf course, like, maybe we want to have a fixed route, you know, that's in our south end and going to Curry Park and things like that. I think this is not a permanent solution because the times are changing and our development is changing. But I cannot in good faith give one more money, one more dollar to this Molly's Trolley because I don't, I think it's a waste of our taxpayer dollars. And I think if I'm wrong, it seems like it's going to be easy enough to go back to what we have, the status quo. But why not just give something else a try? Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Just a couple of things following up on your points. So when we rip the band-aid off, it doesn't have to be that painful because we can maintain. I brought this example up. You know, there are options out there that we can get online very quickly, that are vans, that are attractive, that have that can, that are accessible or wheelchair accessible that we can fit, what are the, what are the capacity of these things, about 10 people? Well, a dozen people, which is more than we see now on the trolleys. That can be on on those fixed routes that we think are important, that we think are still getting high ridership. And then your point on the on the northern routes of nobody getting on the trolley, I guarantee you, if you look at the stats now, Roses is serving more people than the trolley line is. So people are using Roses. There's a direct connection there with the community because they're they're local, they know the community. And so I think that's an important thing that we can look at is how do we utilize a service like that to be able to get people interested and get people using public transportation in areas where they normally wouldn't be?
Again, if if you're asking us to choose or give you direction on options now, I don't think we have sufficient information. I think we've got concerns and and Commissioner Fox, Commissioner Ward have articulated. We're going to have, I don't know what an equity zone is. I do know that in certain areas of our city, the historic northwest Pleasant City, we need to have transportation options. Now, if it's Roses Trolley, let's talk about that and see how we as a city can subsidize that to. I need to see a plan for servicing those areas. I don't see that here. And and so if we're talking about using vans in terms of trolleys, that seems attractive. But I I as just one member of the dais, I need to see what that looks like. So what I have before me is not sufficient information to make it, to give you direction. I could tell you issues that I'm concerned about. Yes, I am concerned about the underutilization of the trolleys. I am concerned about people in the 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 northern part of our city not be either not being willing or not wanting to or unable to ride the trolley. So the underutilization of the trolleys, equity in in those areas, those are two concerns of mine, which I don't believe I can tell if those are being properly addressed by what's before me now.
Yeah, I think that the what would help for us to move forward is your comfort level in 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 moving forward with one of these, whether it's a, whether it's just leave it as is, moving forward with a hybrid version that we can then present to you, this is that these are the details of how this will work. Or ripping the band-aid off completely and just going on-demand for now. I think we just went the general direction, then we would come back with the specifics of of what that would look like.
Okay, that's fair. Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you. I have a clarifying question before my question. Can you define preliminary cost?
Yes, absolutely. So preliminary, we know, for example, Gem Cars, which a lot of us refer them to as golf carts, they're about $10,000 per cart per month. So if you take, how many vehicles does it take to provide a certain level of service? So if you look in downtown, there's six total that is servicing the downtown. So six times 10,000, that's how much your cost is per month. So of course, we don't know what type of level of service until we actually have the data, right? Right now, we're making a general assumption that we will need two vehicle to service the the equity zone. And that will give us enough access so that if someone reserved, they're not waiting more than 30 minutes because the zone is that large. So that that's how we determine what the preliminary cost is.
And are the preliminary costs, I see that no change is 1.5. Is that something we've already budgeted for and so we're not asking for additional funds for this pilot?
Yes, in essence, the data that we receive from the CRA is approximately 1.55. For the sake of conversation, we're we're saying that it costs one and a half million dollars as it is right now for Molly's Trolley to operate the the system that they have in downtown.
So thank you so much. I mean, given this information that you presented today and my colleagues' comments, thank you so much, Commissioner Fox and Ward for adding some more details to this. I think that's really helpful in in helping us to make a decision. I am certainly a rip the band-aid off kind of person as well. Although I will say the things that I'm considering are the marketing that you talked about. So if we rip the band-aid off, I know that you said it ends in less than two months. Do we have enough time and is the BERT program sufficient enough? It sounds like we have some good ideas for marketing to the current users. It sounds like we don't have a tremendous amount of current users, so maybe that helps. The other thing that I'm looking at is the cost between the difference of options three and four. So if if our typical, what we're spending right now is 1.5-ish, you know, clearly, number three looks a little bit more attractive because we could possibly be saving money. And if we choose option four, which is to rip the band-aid off more slowly, I don't know where we would get this extra half a million dollars to do that.
So a couple of things. Let me also remind the the group here that this is a, this is an interim pilot period. So this is a, this is to figure out what the long-term strategy is going to be. So whatever we do here over the next 12 to 24 months will change based on the feedback. The feedback is really going to be more in that 12 to 24-month period. We'll get feedback now. Obviously, if there's a big outcry about taking a trolley route away, then we have to consider that. But I don't think there will be. In terms of cost, yeah, you're right. We could get, we could look at parking revenues as a potential to fill some gaps in for the next budget year. But certainly, the the fourth one is going to be the most challenging in terms of of funding that. I think one of the easiest things to do would be to replace some of the trolley lines that we have now, that ones that we have had the most demand, modify them a little bit and put vans in place and then have the on-demand system in place for the rest of the city. I think that's probably the lowest hanging fruit in terms of testing things out, keeping a, keeping fixed routes there so we don't lose the fixed route. Then it's just changing the vehicle. We're not, we're not changing, we're not changing the ability for people to get from point A to point B. We're just changing the type of vehicle temporarily to give us a couple of years to to work things out and come up with a permanent plan. And vehicles may change drastically in two years. You know, we're still autonomous vehicles are still quite not there, but they may be in two years from now.
The the other thing I'm concerned about, since this is a pilot period, is boxing ourselves into a corner with a particular vendor.
Yes.
Because I don't want to get, you know, presumably after the pilot period, we're going to go to a more permanent structure. And presumably, that involves? And presumably that involves competitive bidding, et cetera. So what I don't want to do is to inadvertently give someone a leg up because they were the ones that we were using doing. So I don't know how that would work either, but I'm concerned about just narrowing the choices of vendors during this, so much during this pilot period that that particular vendor, the very exclusive group of vendors now has, seems to have a, a leg up when we do go to competitive bidding. Just throwing that out there. I don't know how you solve the problem, but that's something I'm concerned about. Commissioner Ward?
I think we can all acknowledge that the trolleys are more expensive maintenance. If we switched over, away from them, how quickly could you, like if we, if we essentially kept some of the fixed routes, because I, I do think that they serve a purpose and people know about it. And I feel like if we, if we did rip that Band-Aid off from fixed routes, we would have a backlash from people who are used to the fixed routes. But how quickly could you gear up and essentially swap out the trolley cars for more of these lower-cost vehicles? That way you wouldn't see that drop-off of some of these higher, you know, ridership fixed routes. And we would be lowering that cost, that's that 2 million mark, to make up for the fact that we're paying so much on these trolleys.
Absolutely. And I think it goes back to what the mayor's question was or statement was. It's based on vendor selection and whoever's going to give us the best value and cost. And also within the, if they have vehicle in their fleet, it could be as soon as two to three weeks for them to mobilize a new fleet.
Commissioner Fox?
Thank you so much. I had a question just about the budget for the 1.5 million. Does that include, is that just the CRA or does that include the DDA? And I know that Bright Line also pays a portion of the circuit, so I'm just curious how we're factoring all that in.
It's, it's everything. It's the CRA and the DDA. Not Bright Line, yes, that's separate.
Commissioner Peduzzi?
Thank you, Mayor. And I know you had mentioned that you think that, that part of the decline in the ridership of the trolleys is because of, you know, using the alternative modes, the circuit. Have we, we done any looking into, you know, other reasons why the trolley might not have been successful? You know, I'm trying to wrap my head around the type of vehicle and when you see it, whether it's a vehicle you want to get on or avoid. And I'm a little concerned with a van that maybe people would think, wow, it's a, it's a small, tight space, you're going to put 12 people in this thing potentially. Do I want to get on that? I think that the circuit has been successful because you can see exactly where you're going to sit from the outside. You can, it's open air. You're not going to catch COVID from the person probably sitting next to you or, you know. Have we thought about the types of transportation for what will attract ridership? And, and I'm kind of surprised that the trolley, because there's still some novelty for people who visit here, I would think with a trolley and it's bigger, it's more spacious, you know, have we really given any thought to the types of vehicles that people want to ride in?
Yeah, I, you're absolutely right. It's, vehicle selection is very important. And so that's why we're not making a decision at this time, what type of vehicles, like Armando said, you know, it might change. What we've seen is that traditionally, when we think of autonomous, we think of those very beautiful, all-glass, very modern type of vehicle, they're not ready. And the cost of it right now is just way too high. You're talking about BEEP where it's upward of a half a million dollars per year, and then there's a $30,000 a month maintenance cost on something like that. I think it's, those are, right now are at, we want those type of vehicle, they're just not here right now. The other thing that we have to think about is like we have Buy America provisions in our contract. We, when we purchase a vehicle, we, they have to be made in America. So I know before COVID, BYD, which is a Chinese-owned factory that builds smaller type of vehicles, started their operations in LA. I do not think that they have ramped up since then because of the downturn of COVID. But I absolutely agree with you that the, the smaller gem cars are very attractive. And I think that is part of the reason why people tend to transition to those type of vehicle. Once you get, I'm sorry, Armando, you do have a three-mile radius, right? That, where those are very, very effective. Once you go outside of the downtown, when you want to carry people on a longer route, you do need to think of a larger vehicle, whether if it's a trolley, a van, a bus. So it's, it's very important for us to think of different vehicle size when we decide on what is the future of the fleet.
Well, I just wanted to add that those gem vehicles now are getting a little bit bigger too. So they, they have a little larger capacity, they have some newer vehicles. So that, that's potentially an option. If you're going to do a fixed route with a vehicle, let's say with six passengers or eight passengers, it just has to be frequent. You have to be there every 10 minutes. So there, there are some options out there. Interestingly enough, if you look at, I was just reading the other day, Tri-Rail ridership is up substantially over the past year, even though it's, you know, it, it is something that you would think people would begin to shy away from. There's other options, it is crowded as well, but their ridership is up. So part of that, this 12 to 24-month period is to determine what types of vehicles are people comfortable riding in because things have shifted a lot over the last couple of years.
So tell us again what information you're looking for from us today and then give us an idea of next steps. What are you looking for from us?
Would, if, if you want to maintain the current system and extend that for a period of time, if you want to try a hybrid version, which we would then come back to you, that includes fixed routes and on-demand routes, if you want to rip the Band-Aid off completely and just go to on-demand routes for the next 12 to 24 months while we go, while we work through a, a next-generation system, those are kind of the three options. And we would come back to you with the details. Obviously, if there's no change, there's no details come back with you. But the other two would have, we would have details that we bring back.
Quick question to legal. Do we have any obligations to Molly's Trolleys if we do not renew their contract?
My understanding is the contract is expiring in May. And we are going to need to select something, we're going to have to do something no matter what. So their contract's expiring.
So if it expires on its terms, then we don't have any?
Correct.
Legal obligation? Okay. Commissioners, you've heard kind of the request for direction from Mr. Fana. Any thoughts? Preliminary suggestions? Commissioner Lambert?
Just with the contract, I've not seen this specific contract. I would imagine on the day that it expires, that's it. We don't have to have, I don't know if this is a renewal year or something like that. We don't have to have given them 30, 60, 90 days notice.
I think that they're at the end of renewal periods.
Yeah, we're, I think we're beyond it.
And the original contract, you're at the end of life and you have to do something, whether it be put out a new solicitation, which at this time, there's not sufficient time to do that by June 1st and have somebody up and running, or do a pilot that's being proposed here.
I'm personally okay with option three with the caveat, and because it's 1.2 million and we have just a little bit of wiggle room there that, you know, to the mayor's point, we haven't seen the plan yet for this, you know, and, and to the point that we've, a few of us have made here is, is the communications plan that we could do in the next 45 days enough to let everybody know who rides a fixed route vehicle that, hey, we're going to be disbanding that? And maybe there's a one-month option for continuing, you know, I, I don't know. Up for discussion.
Well, just on the point of the routes, we can, we can maintain that, we can phase the routes out over a longer period of time. In other words, Molly's Trolleys or whoever ends on May 30th, that doesn't mean that we can't just keep the fixed route for a couple more months until, and then phase that with another vehicle, so.
And I, I was making hand and eye signal to Rafael, but yes, essentially to answer your question, yes, we have sufficient time to do communications.
Commissioner Ward?
I'm, I'm for on the switching to three, but I would say, I, I would really want, if we're going to phase out, actually, I don't even want to phase out. I think fixed routes are important and I would prefer if, to test, if we're testing something of a pilot, that we, we up on the, the carts and try to figure out some of these fixed routes and see what the ridership is on, on the carts. Because I do agree with Commissioner Peduzzi that I'm, I'm more preferential to try to find something that looks like it's open, like the trolleys were and like the carts are versus jumping into a van, a closed van. And if you are able to gear up, like you said you are, in two to three weeks and, and add more of these, then we should be able to continue some of these high-demand fixed routes and test and see whether that is three months up, you know, up, you said up to three months on the no change existing. But what if we said, hey, we're going to try three months and, and add up these carts and have that as a fixed route, see if people are still using them versus just getting rid of it completely?
Understood. Yes, we definitely could consider.
Yeah, like I said, we can, we can, we can make adjustments to those routes depending on what the ridership is showing as opposed to just running an empty vehicle. So we can make those adjustments pretty much on the fly and then communicate those adjustments. And again, this is a, this is an adjustment period. This is to collect the data so that once we get into, two years from now, we have a permanent system in place that everybody's happy with and that people are riding.
All right. I, I, I need to see if we go with option three relatively quickly, what the plan is for the so-called equity zones. Because I don't see that here. And before we finalize option three, I got to make sure, I for one, will want to ensure that we have suitable options in those equity zones.
Will do. And we actually have already some preliminary studies that we've done on, on the, on the locations of where those would be and how that would work out.
All right, okay.
So if option three is, is sort of the, the go-to point, we will then...
Let's see what Commissioner Peduzzi, he has his hand up.
I would also agree with option three with the caveat as outlined by Commissioner Ward.
And then Commissioner Fox, you had your hand up?
I'm definitely for the rip the Band-Aid off. So thank you very much. I've been waiting for, I don't know, a year or so for this day. And I am very grateful to all of you that have worked so hard on this. Thank you so much.
Okay. So it sounds like option three with some Band-Aids. Now, we got, we got you.
Option three with some tweaks and then get to us what the vendor selection plan looks like as well?
Okay.
All right, what are the next steps? What are the next steps? If we, if we, now that you've heard us, what are the next steps here?
Well, we're going to go ahead and we're, put the plan together of the details for option three and what that would look like, including what fixed routes would look like, the types of vehicles that we can get online and then a timeline for that and the equity zone issue. We'll get that to you within the next three weeks, let's say by the end of the month?
Yeah, by the end of...
By the end of April. And then we'll, we'll circle back on if that's the direction you want to head in, then we'll go ahead and move that direction.
All right, so let's, let's see if we could squeeze it into another mayor commission workshop? Or, you know, or special meeting. I know time is of the essence, so work with the city administrator and see if we can squeeze it into one of those, so it's a public meeting and we can have the benefit of hearing from each other, the reaction to what it is you put together.
Great. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. All right, item three, general fund, one-time funding budget amendment. Ms. Johnson?
Members of the commission, staff and those who are watching from home. For the record, Fay Johnson, city administrator for the city of West Palm Beach. What is going to be presented to the board this morning is a proposal to do a mid-year one-time funding needs for your consideration. And before I start in, I want to put it into perspective and maybe give you some context. Historically, we have not included capital and one-time items in our annual budget. Normally, the way that that has been handled is that when we go through the completion of the annual financial comprehensive report, we determine how much discretionary fund balance money remains. And discretionary is distinguished from the required fund balance under the code that 5% and the 3%. So it's literally remaining general fund money that has not been identified for a specific purpose. Throughout the fiscal year, the board acts on different requests to utilize that money. And typically, it has been for vehicles where you would see a request come for police vehicles. We had one-time funded requests that came for the selling of City Hall and the library. And so as we look at how we have progressed from the FY '20 budget, to put it into context, we were doing it on sort of an incremental basis. And then in FY '21, we went to a process whereby we would come mid-year so that the board would not have to see requests coming on an incremental basis, but you would see all of the one-time funding requests come mid-year and then come to you for your formal action. Last year, the one-time funding requests, we were looking at it out of the FY '21 general fund discretionary dollars. At that time, we had approximately 11 million in discretionary fund balance. About 5.1 million of that was approved to close a deficit that we had in the risk management fund. We also used a portion of it for our vehicle replacement plan because we're still going through that effort of getting on an annual vehicle replacement plan to catch up and then stay afloat of what we need to do on an annual basis. One of the other big-ticket items that came out of the one-time funding from FY '21 was the half a million dollars that the board approved for the small business grant program. And that program was just launched on Friday, just an incredible turnout of, of small businesses that are interested in that program. So what is different from what is being proposed before you this morning is that it's not being proposed from your FY '22 general fund discretionary dollars, which is typically the case, is coming out of general fund discretionary dollars. Finance is still in the process of finalizing the FY '22 annual financial report, and that will determine how much general fund discretionary dollars we have. So this is a deviation from what we've done in the past. The proposal before you this morning is to take TDR revenue and use it for the various items that are part of the presentation. Under the resolution that the board adopted, TDR revenue goes into the housing trust fund unless the board approves otherwise. So therein is the deviation from what you have seen in the past. I sent commissioners, I sent you all an email kind of outlining the items, had follow-up briefings, but as a body, we certainly need to go through this presentation to get further input and direction and answer any further questions. We had very good feedback during the briefings. So as I indicated, what is proposed is to utilize TDR revenue that the city has already collected for talking purposes, 6.6 million dollars. The one-time funding items that is proposed is for 5.8 or 5.9 million dollars rounding. And then the remaining TDR revenue would be the 724,000 that would go into the housing trust fund. So just by way of recap, and I certainly am not going to go through a detailed presentation, Mr. Green, our Development Services Director, did a presentation on each of these developments as they were considered and approved by the board. But just to put it into perspective, we had $912,000 plus of TDR revenue from the Lencap residential apartment complex that has the 130-room hotels and then some commercial development located on Detour. Moving right along, the WPN Holdings mixed-use development that generated 1.7 million in TDR revenue. And then Samar, which is a proposed hotel and spa of about 763 dollars in TDR revenue. And then the Nor, which is to our, our north here of City Hall of about 3.2 million dollars. And that is how we came up with the total of the 6.6 million dollars in TDR revenue that if the board does not direct otherwise, it will go into the housing trust fund as is codified by resolution. So in terms of the items that are being presented to you this morning for consideration and further discussion, in FY '23, for the FY '23 budget, which is this... which is this year's budget, there were a number of one-time funding requests from the departments. For FY '24, there continue to be one-time funding requests that need to be considered. The departments went through their particular one-time funding requests and sort of did a prioritization of those. Those requests in total from FY '23 and the FY '24 budget that we're working on was a little over 17 million dollars. So that's a big number that, for various reasons, we can't bring forward a proposal on all 17 million dollars of requests. After we got the department's prioritization of their items in discussion with the mayor and reviewing it, overall, we looked at then prioritizing those 17 million dollars in requests to get to this prioritization list that is being presented to you this morning. So we looked at what grant obligations does the city currently have? What grant have we received and do we have total funding for that particular grant-funded project? We looked at whether or not we have security risks, potential security risks that we want to mitigate. We looked at potential occupational hazards that we want to mitigate, as well as potential safety hazards and then any critical operational needs. So we pair that 17 million dollars of one-time funding requests down to the 5 million-plus requests that are being presented to you this morning. So in way of a breakdown, for a grant fund, as we have bought on a grants administrator and the mayor and you, as commissioners, have continued to seek or support the staff seeking additional grant opportunities. As we talked about this two years ago, we were looking at just setting up a general grant fund that would provide match dollars for whatever grants that we secured. We were fortunate enough, the first time out the gate, to secure a significant grant from the state for the Seawall Pilot elevation project. Because of the dollar amount of that grant and the 50% grant match, you know, that is 3.6 million. So theoretically, we were looking at setting up a fund probably in the ballpark of about 5 million that will cover a number of grant opportunities. But when you get a huge grant out the gate, that really takes up a lion's share of what we potentially had been discussing at the staff level and with the mayor. Moving on, under police, the site on Wheels is a project that was funded out of the FY '23 federal ominous appropriation bill. That is a secure radio system for police. It was funded about $969,500, but due to increase in costs, there is a gap that we need to be able to fully execute that program. Moving right on, under police, the access control replacement. You all, the board, you may recall that we bought one-time funding requests out of IT reserves to actually do some security enhancements to the building for the police department. But there is still a need for additional funding. And this particular funding would allow for the replacement of the security cameras and all. So it will complete the security updates in the police department. Under Public Works, the fleet mechanics maintenance contract, the 477,000 would allow us to put in a, and we just heard the term stopgap with the last presentation, but this would allow us to put in an interim or a stopgap plan to procure one year of labor contract to help assist with the shortfall that we have in staffing to be able to maintain the maintenance on not just sanitation vehicles, but on the emergency vehicles as well. Now, historically and procedurally, we try to always avoid going out for a labor contract because you want to invest your personnel dollars in your staff. But we're in a situation where we have a significant number of staff shortages as well as the operation is not fully staffed at an ideal level where they would be able to keep the maintenance of the emergency vehicles and sanitation vehicles and all of the vehicles that we have. But emergency and sanitation vehicles are the critical ones. I think right now that the department has six vacancies in terms of fleet technicians. Based on their ideal level of staffing, they're understaffed by three positions. So when you look at the combination of those two, they really are being impacted. We have been fortunate on the sanitation side. When we've not been able to make the scheduled pickup, we've been able to get to it the next day by informing residents, keeping them in the loop when their scheduled pickup was going to be late or delayed. And I want to thank them for their patience in working with us. So this funding would allow us to piggyback on a contract with Deerfield Beach and it is intended to be just a stopgap measure to hopefully get us the coverage that we need to maintain the level of service to keep the vehicles on the road. And in the interim while we are doing that, should the board support it, we will continue to look at what is it that we can do to fill vacant positions, address some of the staffing, funding challenges that we have as it relates to salaries. So this is an interim plan and it certainly will not be something that we'd be looking at on a permanent basis contracting out labor when we have in-house positions that perform that function. Moving on to fire, Fire Station Three, which is on the north end, there is a need to mitigate any occupational hazards in terms of the condition of that building. We want to seal it and rehab it, upgrade the space because we want to convert it into a clinic for the community paramedic program. And we've had some, quite a bit of discussion on that community paramedic program and that's coming along very well. Under Parks and Recreation, the Lincoln Park basketball courts just have endured excessive wear and tear. Those basketball courts are heavily used on a daily basis. If anyone rides that route on a hover here, it's almost impossible to not see kids utilizing it, young adults, men. I mean, it gets a lot of use, which is a great thing, but it has suffered over the years and needs to be repaired. So we want to mitigate any safety hazards for the public by doing a redo of those basketball facilities there. Parks maintenance, the complex, the parking lot is in dire need of being remilled and repaved. We have an ongoing condition where the vehicles that are traveling in and out of the complex, you know, are being damaged. So we're paying for that cost on the back end. We want to just mitigate that hazard there and take care of the repaving so that we save the cost on the back end or we are able to keep the vehicles in operation. The next item is under engineering, railroad crossing maintenance. We have three critical railroad crossings that need to be rehabbed. We have 15th Street, which has been funded in this year's budget from gas tax. The 515,000, 515,000 here is for the 7th Street crossing to be rehabbed. And then we have the 25th Street crossing that we're hoping we're gonna be able to identify funds for FY '24. And then the next item is for the replacement of the library's checkout machines. As it indicates, they are at the end of their life, over 13 years old. And to prevent a total breakdown of those machines and have to go to a manual checkout system, which would impact the staff, we're proposing to use 42,000 to replace all five. So just by way of summary, we identified the various priority categories of the various items. And if this funding were to be supported by the board, you see how it would mitigate the various risks and hazards that we currently are experiencing. So if that were to be supported by the board, the 5.8 to 5.9 million, as I indicated, the remaining 724,825 would go into the housing trust fund. And with that, Mayor, I take questions from the board, further discussion.
Any questions, comments? Commissioner Ward?
Two comments. So on the police security, that $350,000 is, you said, for cameras? Or for, what else is involved in that?
It's for primarily cameras, yes, for the building.
Okay, that's a big price tag for cameras. But, and then also, when you chose these funding items, what was left out? Like essentially, what was just like, hey, maybe we'll just ask for this next budget item? Like, were there other items that you searched through that were other grant matches that we're not gonna be able to match? Or how did you choose these versus the plethora?
There were no grant match items that were left out because now, once you get a grant, you have that obligation. So we wanted to fulfill that obligation. We have 17 million in requests. You got the 5.3 million here. There was a combination of what those items that are not before you include. There were a good number of vehicles that were requested in FY '23 this year. We included, I think, maybe 49, 53 new positions. A number of those new positions, let's say, for example, we had three new positions in fire. They, we did not include vehicles with that. We had new positions in public works related to the, drawing a blank here, where we pick up the debris that they load. The program is going right out of my head. Josh, help me out.
We had a Keep West Palm Beach Beautiful coordinator position.
Okay.
Talking about the vehicles.
Right. And we didn't include vehicles for those various programs.
Co-compliance, sanitation co-compliance, and we also had an operator position.
Yes, so thank you. I just drew a blank as I was trying to call up the program. So you had a number of vehicles that are not included because we're looking at including those vehicles as part of the next step in the vehicle replacement plan. You had some items that are, in our opinion, have a good opportunity of getting a grant. We had some really big-ticket items, for example, a new bomb truck for police. I think it was in the ballpark of 1.7 million. There are a number of grant opportunities for public safety-type vehicles. So we're looking at grant opportunities for those. We had a number of items for carpet replacement for the second floor and different floors in City Hall. We had to terminate the contract with the contractor that was doing the work here. So we've now engaged with the new contractor. So we want to wait until that work is completed on the ceiling and then we will move forward with replacing the carpet. So that item could wait. So what we did was essentially went down each item to determine if they were appropriate for perhaps funding from grants or if they were gonna be included in a vehicle replacement plan, if from a timing perspective, they could wait. And then also considering the fact that we're close to finalizing the FY '22 comprehensive financial annual report. And that will tell us in short order, probably by the end of May, we should know how much discretionary fund balance that we have. So if any of those remaining items, you know, cannot wait until we get a grant cycle or whatever the case may be, you will see a second proposal come to you for consideration and that will be part of the FY '24 budget process.
Commissioner Fox?
Thank you so much for the presentation. I just have, I guess, a question and a comment about the fleet maintenance. I know you and I spoke about it last week. I think my concern is anytime we're getting to a point where we have to find contract labor for our city services, it's a little bit alarming to me. I appreciate that we're sharing the contract with Deerfield Beach. We're not the only city in this situation. But I just, for the record, want to, you know, I know that you're in negotiations now with the unions going forward for the next budget cycle. And I want to, you know, make sure that that is a top priority, that we're looking for. If the issue is with staffing is our salary base, that we, you know, look at, you know, for example, now we're spending 477,000 on a contract, which, had we put it towards salaries, would that have made a difference in us being fully staffed? So I appreciate all the work that you've done on the one-time funding, but I just want, for the record, to know that I hope that we can look really closely at that as we are going into the next budget and the union negotiations.
Wait, 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 wait. Let's get clarification because I don't think, correct me if I'm wrong, Rich Johnson, I don't think we're not getting employees because we're not paying. I just think they're not responding. Am I wrong about that?
Well, it's a combination. In general, we are continuing to have, continue to have challenges, you know, across the board because in certain positions, we're just not competitive. You know, we are still recovering from that five-year gap where our salaries lag behind other municipalities. I think we have made tremendous headway with giving a 5% cost of living adjustment for two years running. But, you know, we still have some work to do. Another factor is that the job market right now, it's like the housing market where, you know, depending on the market, you either are in a seller's market or a buyer's market. Right now, it's an employee market because there are just so many opportunities out there. And if you happen to pay a dollar less than another municipality's, you know, theoretically, folks are gonna go where they can get the highest salary, but...
But I thought I have, because I know it's come before me, have approved salary increases so that we could remain competitive on a case-by-case basis.
Yes, you have, and we do that every day.
So in other words, if we're aware that we are not, again, this could just be a misperception on my part, that we are not competitive in order to get these, the workers required to do maintenance and that is because we aren't competitive on a salary basis, I thought we had been increasing the salaries so that we could become more competitive.
Mayor, we have.
Okay.
We absolutely have. We have done it in a number of ways. We have done it by giving the 5% cost of living adjustments for two years running. We have increased the minimum starting ranges and the maximum started ranges so that when we advertise, we have a higher salary. And where we have individuals who apply for the job and are selected, that's where we then look at their experience and where we are in terms of our salary structure. And as you indicated, we have paid higher than the starting salary and what have you. Here is where our hands are tied. When you look at the fleet mechanics or technician as a classification, if we were to raise the salaries for that particular classification of employees, now you're into negotiating that with the union. That is not something, even though you have indicated you want to do what we can do to get higher salaries, we couldn't do that administratively unilaterally because now you have to then open back up the contract and not be able to just negotiate for one classification of positions within that contract. It would be every position that falls under SEIU. So we're in that kind of predicament here. Now that we are in negotiations with SEIU and PMSA, certainly based on the priority that you have made clear, you want us to be competitive. You know, we're gonna be taking a very hard, strategic look at doing the most that we can do so that we get out of this situation. But the reality is, when you have a five-year lag where you're freezing salaries and you don't do that market adjustment, you know, it just stands to reason that while other municipalities were giving increases, cost of living during that five-year period, and we were not, you know, you're gonna have those challenges when the market catches up with you. So that's, you know, kind of the situation that we have right now. Amande, you wanna add something?
Yeah, I just want to add something that's sort of unique to this... I just want to add something that's sort of unique to this position, and that is, they require a C D L license because they're working on heavy machinery and large vehicles. That's a very competitive area right now to be competing with the private market in, number one. Number two, even getting the licenses is difficult because there's such a backlog at the few schools that, that offer that, that option. So it's, it's, it's a bit, it's a bit of a unique challenge with this position.
I just wanted to disuse the public of the notion that we were just sitting on our hands and opting not to try to be competitive and just saying, all right, we'll just sell 477,000 into a labor contract. I believe that we are doing everything that we can at this point. Now, I understand that there are limitations because of the contract, and, and we're looking to make market adjustments similar to what we did with the public safety unions in, in previous years with a P M S A and S E I U. So we're, we're looking at that. But we're not just, we're not complacent, we're not being, we're not ignoring the fact that if there are ways to be more competitive from a salary standpoint to get these positions filled, we're doing everything we can short of renegotiating a union contract at this point. But since we're in the process of negotiation, labor negotiations now.
No, you're absolutely right, and, and I appreciate the question because it helped to draw out all that we're doing and to give members of the public, you know, a comprehensive understanding, you know, of the challenge. This is not a decision where we have this situation and then the first thought is, well, we'll just, you know, contract out. I think this is probably the first time where we are looking at having as a stopgap measure to have to go to contract labor. But when you consider what are the options, I think that it is prudent of us to at least have a stopgap, short-term contract in place to keep vehicles on the road as opposed to not doing anything until we complete union negotiations. And then we have a situation where we can't keep emergency vehicles on the road, we can't keep sanitation vehicles on the road, we can't pick up the garbage, and then that is the worst of the options. And it's not one that I want to see our city find itself.
Commissioner Beduzzi?
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Johnson, I just wanted to briefly address something that you had mentioned, but due to the sensitivity of the, of the topic, I, I won't go into detail. But you had mentioned public safety and the need maybe for a specialty vehicle, replacement of a specialty vehicle, the bomb unit, at some point. And I know there's other equipment in public safety that probably needs to be upgraded at some point also. I just want to make sure that we don't lose sight, even if, if it may not be appropriate right here, right now. As long as we have a plan in place, either for grant funding, because these things are important, some of these things that you mentioned specifically, with the way our city is changing and with the influx from the north and with the festivals that we have, that we make sure that we don't have to rely 100% on other agencies and to make sure that we have a plan in place for making sure that equipment is ready to be utilized at, in a time of need.
Ms. Rothenberg, you wanted to weigh in?
Sure, I just wanted to let you know, Commissioner Peduzzi, that one of the federal funding requests this year does in fact include all of the equipment that outfit the vehicle, which is a, a large portion of the monetary ask of the Police Department. And we have our eyes clearly on making sure that they get the, the updated equipment that's needed.
Thank you.
Yeah, so in addition to what Ms. Rothenberg articulated, you know, we are going to be looking, to the greatest extent that we can, you know, what we can include in the proposal for the F Y 22 General Fund discretionary dollars. So that would be another look at those remaining items. So we are looking at all aspects of potential funding because all of the needs, you know, are important and probably at this point, all of them are critical.
Commissioner Ward?
On a separate topic, I want to say, I am happy to see Fire Station 3, I'm the community paramedic, that building is one of our jewels on Broadway, so I love that that's going in there, and I appreciate it. As for the bicycle program with the police, and I know I mentioned to this previously, I think there's a need, and, and I love that, and, and increased visibility, and I'm glad that they're going to be in the historic northwest. And I would hope that we also continue that and look towards the visibility that I've been hearing requested from residents up in the north end of getting our, our police because I feel like that's going to be a comment. Once they see it there, they're going to be like, hey, wait, we've been asking for this here as well. So just to think about that as a plan in the future.
Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you. Administrator Johnson, can you go to the end of the slide with the totals again?
That one or?
The next one. We had the total, thank you. And first, I just want to say thank you so much. It is clear that you are balancing not only the requests, but our needs, as well as what other funding is coming in in the future. I do appreciate that. I was just curious, so this is a, a total of allocation of one-time funding of 6.5 million. What is an average amount? I mean, if there is an average amount that, that we can expect to see or that, you know, I, I know that maybe these departments have a laundry list of items that they'd like to see in the future. I mean, what's a typical amount for these one-time funding expenditures?
Right now, it's very difficult to give you a typical amount that you would see. Here is what I would say. We are still playing catch-up, you know, from years past where we didn't address them at all. I mean, we just had this run in total, and we have been eating away at that for the last three years. I think once we get to having a plan to fully fund the balance of the 17 million that are not included here, then I think we are at a place where we'll do a level set. And that the board should see probably, I would say, and this is just based on discussions with departments and all, we probably will be at a place where you would see somewhere between maybe 3 million on the low end and 5 million on the high end on an annual basis, you know, once we get to that place. So I'm hoping that for the F Y 25 budget process, that we would be doing a level set on one-time items. Because once we catch up, then it's easier to, you know, stay abreast of where we need to be.
That's great, thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions, comments? All right, thank you very much. Do you, you need any direction from us at this point?
No, Mayor, I was just going to say, hearing, no objection from the board. Our next step would be to put it on a May, probably your first May, agenda for the board's consideration and hopefully approval of the plan.
Thank you, great. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, so for this section of the work session, I don't have any matters. Let's adjourn this portion and proceed right into the work session for the C R A, unless there's any object. Do you all have anything for the good of the body for this section? Okay, so this meeting is adjourned, Mayor Commission work session is adjourned. Let's do two minutes, three minutes, and we'll reconvene as the work session for the C R A at 11:00 P. M.